I call the meeting to order. The meeting of, the regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is scheduled for tonight, September the 12th, 2017. We'll start off with a infocation by Reverend Lyndon Moore, West End United Methodist Church, and I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand. Then afterwards, if everybody would stand, and Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
O divine creator, we pray, Lord, your blessings upon this gathering here. We pray that the leaders of this great city will guide and be guided and directed by you. We pray that the citizens of this city will remember just how great this city is, and so that our leaders and our citizens will work together for the good of Portsmouth. And so, Lord, as this meeting is convened, we pray that the work that is done, the words that are said, the aftermath of this meeting will be for the good of Portsmouth, Virginia. It's in the name of the divine creator we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now have an electronic roll call. Please indicate your presence by voting yes. And, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Hundred percent. The next item of business approval, the consideration of approval of minutes, we have minutes of a call meeting of August the 21st, 2017, minutes of a call meeting of August 22nd, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting, August 22nd, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the minutes, and it's been duly seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our next item of business is a public hearing. It is item 17-389. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. UP 17-09 Uptown Edward Kovell with AECOM URS on behalf of McDonald's Corporation is requesting a use permit to update their backlit signs on the building located at 801 London Boulevard. The property is located in the D2 FBC Form-Based Code District, which prohibits backlit signs. This is part of a larger project to update the facility overall by adding dual-order lanes, rescan the exterior of the building, and update the interior dining area of the building. The property is designated within the mixed-use corridor on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Madam City Manager.
Mr. Baldwin, would you come forward, please?
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of council. As indicated, the McDonald's Corporation is proposing to remodel and refurbish their existing restaurant that's located at 1801, at 801 London Boulevard. The site's located at the corner of London and Effingham, and is Zone D2 Form-Based Code, as is shown on the slide, on the screen there. This is an aerial photograph, once again identifying the location of this site. We note the future Wendy's in the next-door parcel. As you're well aware, this property is under the D2 Form-Based Code, and council's had a number of issues as has staff in trying to apply the requirements of the Form-Based Code, which is a design-based zoning standard. City Council requested some relief to that. We developed what is common and referred to as the patch, the D2 patch, which allows City Council to approve modifications to the design standards through the use permit process, and that's what you have before you tonight. And while this is a much smaller matter in this case, it's very similar to the use permit that you considered for Wendy's, where you modified a number of the design standards for them as well. Again, I think we're all familiar with the location we're talking about. I just want to make a note that that freestanding McDonald's sign is not part of this application. We're strictly talking about the signage on the building itself. Now, while not particularly a part of the use permit process, want to give you an idea of what McDonald's proposing to do here. They're going to redo the exterior of the building, they're going to redo the dining room area, and they're going to modify the site in some respects. They're going to add, I think what's pretty common now, the double drive-through, similar to the one out on Airline Boulevard. If you've been to that McDonald's drive-through, you see the double drive-through setup back there. They're also going to be closing the driveway that's located on Queen Street, so they'll limit that point of access out there. That accommodates both the double drive-through, also allows for a pass-through lane for cars to move around the drive-through without being blocked by the drive-through lanes. So this is a rendering of what the proposed exterior of the building's going to look like, and just for the specifics of this application, we'll just look at the top two, I mean, the two slides here. At the very top, we have the Chestnut Street side. We call that the non-drive-through side. You see that yellow M on the building? That's one of the McDonald's logo signs. If you look at the elevation on the bottom, that's the drive-through side. See the drive-through windows? It's got the McDonald's word, you know, the name of the corporation on top. Those are all signs. In addition to those, you have the London Boulevard elevation. You can see both of those types of signs there. You see the McDonald's M logo, as well as the name McDonald's. What you have before you tonight, Ashley, is simply whether or not to allow them to backlight these signs, which is pretty standard on these types of fast-food restaurants, is what they have today. It's what was approved for Wendy's. The D2 Form-Based Code does not allow interior-lit signs. That's one of the design standards in there that we're working on as we modify the D2 district, but under the current regulations, that's still in effect, and the way for applicants to request relief from that standard is to go through the use permit process. So, in essence, what you have before you tonight is whether or not to allow these wall-mounted signs to be backlit. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing, considered this item. They're meeting on August the 1st, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Mr. Baldwin? And, Mr. City Attorney, this is on first reading tonight.
That is correct, yep. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing on conditional use permits 17-09, which you just had a briefing, and I open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this matter? If you do, please come to the left turn. Anybody want to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I declare this public hearing close. Ladies and gentlemen, council, in order for this to be before us for our consideration, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to the City Manager's Report and item 17-390, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting Children's Services Act supplemental funding in the amount of $189,394 from the Virginia Department of Social Services into the FY 2017 Children's Services Act Fund.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In order for us to consider this matter and get it before us, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We do have a motion, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, the motion carries. Next item is 17-391, which is the consideration, the adoption of a ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a local emergency management program grant in the amount of $57,992 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for emergency management equipment, supplies, and training.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to have this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Good. We have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17-392, which is the consideration of the adoption of a ordinance accepting certain grant funding. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness program funding in the amount of $3,500 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you. In order for us to consider this item, is there a motion to adopt?
Adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no.
Reunite.
And the motion carries. Which brings us to item 17-393, which is the consideration of an ordinance pertaining to a transfer. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance confirming a transfer of $266,604 from the non-departmental salary employee bonus line item of the FY 2017 General Fund Budget to the Public Safety category of the FY 2017 General Fund Budget to fund overtime and benefit costs of the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services incurred during FY 2017.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Good. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And the motion passes six-one. Which brings us to item 17-394, which is the consideration of adoption of a certain ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting public assistance grant revenue in the amount of $87,272.34 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for reimbursement of costs for repairs to Cedar Grove Cemetery necessitated by Hurricane Matthew.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, this motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17-395, which is the consideration of the adoption of a ordinance. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the education category of the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund Budget to establish three new projects, and appropriating said funds to each, including $2,308,838 to the Interactive Whiteboard Panels Project, $452,628 to the Churchill and Middle School Restroom Renovation Project, and $550,000 to the James Hurst Elementary and Churchill Primary and Intermediate Elementary Schools Classrooms Project.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and we do have two speakers. The first speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. In our Virginia Constitution, Article 1, Section 15 reads that "No free government nor the blessings of liberty can be preserved to any people but by firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, and virtue, by the recognition of all citizens that they have duties as well as rights, and that such rights cannot be enjoyed save in a society where law is respected and due processes observed. That free government rests, as does all progress, upon the broadest possible diffusion of knowledge, and that the Commonwealth should avail itself of all those talents which nature has sown so liberately among its people by assuring the opportunity for their fullest development by an effective system of education through the Commonwealth." But let's look at Portsmouth. This 17-395 regards the adoption of amending the education category for 2018 Capital Improvement Fund to establish three new projects. The first project wants to appropriate over $2 million to the Interactive Whiteboard Panels Project. In the work session notes, over $5 million was reported to be encumbered for not only the interactive panels, but also other projects, such as paving of parking lots. What parking lots? Paintings of buildings? What buildings? Band uniforms? What school? Computers? Where are they needed? Furniture? What kind of furniture and where needed? Athletic equipment? Order not paid yet? And what kind and where needed? Other goods and services received but invoices not yet paid? And what goods and services received and why not paid? What department is going to be in charge of this project? The Human Resource and Operations Department? The Information Technology Department? Or the Curriculum and Instruction Department? The Information Technology Department or the Curriculum and Instruction supervises instructional technology and media? Under operations side, there's a facility maintenance coordinator. Under him is the project management coordinator. Is this coordinator who is going to be the project manager of the whiteboard panel project? Or is this project going to be the responsibility of the director of information technology? And if so, who is going to manage this project in his department? Especially when you want over $2 million of the 30% taxpayers who are paying taxes in this city? Or who is going to manage this project under supervisors of instructional technology and media? This is our main problem in our public school division. There's no structure. Therefore, there's no appropriate spending of our taxpayers' money. No one knows who is doing what with our money, our elected and are not representing the people. The second project includes three different facility maintenance projects, which include over $452,000 for the Churchill and Middle School Restroom Renovation Project, $550,000 for the James Hurst Elementary and Churchill and Primary Intermediate Elementary Schools Classroom Project. Is the facilities maintenance coordinator going to be the project leader? Is he going to work with the project management coordinator? The zone supervisors? The trade workers? The inventory clerk? The warehouse and supply supervisor? The storekeepers and the service crew for these three projects? If not, who is going to manage these three projects? In the work session notes, $750,000 to City Capital Improvement Fund for the following, $550,000 to enclose all classrooms and the schools, $200,000 for renovation of Woodrow Wilson High School restrooms, $91,000 for top dress of I.C. Norcal and Churchill and High School football fields, sand pits at Woodrow Wilson High School, update sound system at Woodrow Wilson High School Stadium, athletics shoulder pads, and science classroom furniture in middle school. What middle schools got what and how much? So, that's my idea of y'all voting. We ain't getting the information because this ain't structured and I ain't getting any help for it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Godalgie Otrosky, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. Please note that I have spared you 15 minutes and three more appearances by myself by combining my remarks on the next several items under the single heading. You're welcome. The eminent diplomat Abba Eben once said, "Men and nations behave reasonably when they have exhausted all the other alternatives." Thankfully, you have disproved this pronouncement by taking a timeout, by allowing the chief executive officer of the city and the chief executive officer of the school system some time to talk through some rather contentious issues. You have arrived at a resolution to the reappropriation of surplus schools' funds from the last fiscal year that I think is helpful to the school system and is good for the community as a whole. The way you were headed one meeting ago would not have been as productive. So President Johnson's "Come, let us reason together" approach seems to have worked in this situation, and I would invite you to keep that in mind the next time around. Now, this item was supposed to have had a compact component to it. I noted when I looked at the printed agenda, after looking at the one online, that it had been omitted. The principles of that compact seem to me to be rather reasonable. Whether it was necessary to state them explicitly or not, I'm not certain, but it's not a bad thing to carry around in the back of your heads. The idea that the school system and the city are partners, equal partners, is an important idea. The city has often used its financial clout to bludgeon the school system and to coerce conformance to the city's notion of what the schools should do and how they should do it. My understanding is that by the law of the Commonwealth, that would be illegal interference, but I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a layperson with an above-average reading ability. So I encourage you to go forward through this next fiscal year and the ones thereafter in a spirit of partnership, in a spirit of collaboration, and see what benefits you can bring to our students, to our schools, and to our community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a motion before us, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. One more speaker? Okay, we're now ready to vote. All in favor of the motion, vote yes; opposed, no. And, Madam Clerk, the motion carries. Which brings us to, if I'm keeping track correctly, item 17-396, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendant funds from the 2017 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget in the total amount of $328,447 into the FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund Budget.
Thank you. In order for us to have this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt that's been duly seconded, and we do have one speaker, Donna Si, and, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 17-396 regards the adoption to reappropriate leftover money from the 2017 Grant Fund Budget of over $328,000 and put it into the year of 2018 Grant Fund Budget. This Grant Fund Budget is located right here, under the Office of Budget and Planning, Chief Financial Officer. She is responsible for the Budget Analysis Director, and under her is the Director of Accounting. This director has authority over the Senior Accountant. The Accounting Supervisor has under her authority the payroll and accounts payable individuals. The Director of Accounting continues her authority over the Benefit Supervisor and the Grants Manager. There is something dreadfully wrong to have all these positions and all these millions of dollars left over with no accountability of the Chief Financial Officer and the Budget Analyst for the Grant Fund Budget not to be balanced at the end of the year 2017. In the work session notes, unspent money was over $116,000. Encumbered was over $211,000, which totals $328,000. To balance this account, it would need over $95,000. The school requests over $44,000 of unused funds from the Virginia Preschool Initiative for non-payroll needs. It also requests over $31,000 of unused early reading initiative for non-payroll needs. It also requests over $41,000 of unused funds from the SOL Algebra Readiness Grant for Use of Math tutors. The unspent money, over $116,000, $211,000 encumbered funds to be re-appropriated, and the balance is over $95,000 encumbered. What is the items encumbered? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes; opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to item 17-397, which is the consideration of the adoption of an appropriation ordinance. And, Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendant funds from the FY 2017 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund and Risk Management Fund Budgets in the total amount of $3,457,539 by classification to the overall and first quarter of FY 2018 PPS. to the overall and first quarter of FY 2018 PPS General Fund Budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Sir, second. We have a motion that's been made to adopt and duly seconded, and we do have one speaker, and that speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 17-397 regards the adoption to reappropriate the leftover money from 2017 from the General Fund and the Risk Management Fund of over $3 million. The General Fund and the Risk Management Fund is under the authority of the Office of Budget and Planning's Chief Financial Officer. Under the Chief Financial Officer is the Risk Management Director, which is, I'm lost. The purchasing manager has authority over the buyers and the purchasing clerk. Something is dreadfully wrong when there's over $3 million left in the General Fund and the Risk Management Fund. No details on how much money is allotted to the General Fund and how much is allowed to the Risk Management Fund. In the work session notes, management fund remaining amount unspent is over $5 million. The school requests over $3 million, and that's for health, self-insurance, health claims, and reserves. $1 million for workers' compensation as a reserve for large unexpected claims. $636,000 transferred to General Fund to move grade six to middle school. And that adds up to $506,000 to lease portable classrooms with walkways, plumbing, et cetera. $130,000 for information technology within these classrooms. $252,000 transferred to City Capital Improvement Program for renovation of Churchland Middle School Restrooms. Who authorized moving the sixth grade to the middle schools? What sixth grade to what middle school? When was there a public hearing on this spending of money? The health, self-insurance, health claims, and reserves, and the workers' compensation are unexpected claims, is under Risk Management. The other money needs to be taken care of by the Operations Department. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a motion to adopt, has been duly seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the adoption of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
And we're at item 17-398, which is the consideration of an ordinance to appropriate and reappropriate certain funds. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendate funds from the FY 2017 Portsmouth Public Schools' Textbook Fund Budget in the total amount of $2,565,162 into the overall and first quarter FY 2018 Textbook Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion that's been duly seconded, which is to adopt, and we do have one speaker, Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I still live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood until after tonight. 17-398 regards to adoption to reappropriate unspent money from the 2017 year for the school's textbook fund budget of over $2 million to the overall first quarter of 2018 textbook fund budget. So how come this is being addressed quarterly when the last city manager changed the quarterly allotment to monthly? The school board wants to appropriate over $2 million for their interactive white board panels project and also wants to reappropriate over $2 million for textbooks. Why do we need both? In the work session notes, state textbook fund for the year 2016 is over $1 million, and for 2017, it's over $1 million, and the total unspent is over $2,565,000. The school requests over $2 million for textbooks and other qualifying purposes. What are the other qualifying purposes? List, please. And on here, there is no place where it says where the textbooks will be under the authority of anybody, so I think that needs to be addressed. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion before us, which has been duly seconded, to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor of the adoption of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17-399, which is the consideration of an ordinance to reappropriate certain funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to reappropriate unexpendate funds from the FY 2017 Portsmouth Public Schools' Risk Management Fund Budget in the total amount of $4,695,154 into the FY 2018 overall and first quarter Risk Management Fund Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? We do have a motion that's been duly seconded, and we do have two speakers. The first speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 17-399 regards the adoption to reappropriate unspent money for the year 2017 of the Risk Management Fund Budget of over $4 million for the year 2018 overall and first quarter Risk Management Fund Budget. In 17-397, it was adopted to reappropriate over $3 million, General Fund and the Risk Management Fund Budget by classification to the overall and first quarter for the year 2018. In the work session notes, it lists the reappropriation for the year 2017 and recommended honoring the school system reappropriation request and moving $2.3 million from the school general fund to the city's capital improvement projects. So, over $3 million for the school general fund. Over $3 million for City Capital Improvement Program Educational Projects. Over $4 million for the Risk Management, for Risk Management. Over $2 million for state textbook fund, and over $328,000 for the Grants Fund. The General Fund unspent is over $841,000. Encumbered is over $5 million. Total left encumbered is over $4 million. In closing, let us remind ourselves that free government rest, as does all progress upon the broadest possible diffusion of knowledge, and that Portsmouth should avail itself of those talents which nature has sown so liberately among its people by assuring the opportunity for their fullest development by an effective system of financial accountability for education through our public school division. I must say that Portsmouth does not have an effective system of education. The elected ones on city council and the school board has failed to protect the people by their lack of knowledge of the business affairs of our city and our education system. We need a detailed school organizational chart, and with it, hold people accountable for the best accounting principles and practices. And in your booklet, there is five government service areas that represent the city, and I put names beside each of the areas. And the Churchland area has one councilman, and I won't say his name because I don't want to embarrass him, but to me, there should have been a public hearing on all of this to detail everything that I talked about tonight because y'all voted for everything I spoke against. Everything. How do you think that makes me feel? I'm a patriot. I'm a Virginia patriot, and I'm proud of it. And when I have people sitting on this city council, supposed to be representing me, and they don't hold a public town hall meeting, that I can ask questions before I come to city council and be made to look like a fool, when y'all vote against everything I have said, and I don't have the answers? What kind of government do we have in this city if they're going to treat the citizens like somebody they don't want to associate with? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Godalgie Yotrosky. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of city council and fellow interested parties. I excluded this particular item from my omnibus summary earlier because I believe, as many members of council do, that this area provides an opportunity for some economies of scale. If the two elected bodies, the school board and the city council, can reach a reasonable accommodation for the merger of the respective risk management funds and can agree on principles of governance of those funds, there could be some real savings. Now, I think you all have taken some concrete steps toward building a bit of trust with the school board by virtue of the preceding items that you adopted in accordance with the request, the requests that you received from the school's administration. You've demonstrated that you are willing to talk and you are willing to partner. So move forward from there. Keep the dialogue going. Keep it respectful. Show that you are willing to be equal partners. Listen, and perhaps this economy of scale can be brought into existence. And if it does, then build on that because there are some other areas that you have talked about, the potential for consolidation that would provide synergies in the operations of the two entities. Keep the dialogue going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. For full public disclosure, I agree with the previous speaker, Mr. Godalgie Yotrosky. I have mentioned several times over the last few years that I think this is one significant area of consolidation. Most cities in the Commonwealth do combine their risk management funds with schools and the city. Based on information the manager and the CFO provided us some months ago, there was well over a million dollars' worth of savings to be had. I am delighted that we have come to some good agreement with the school board. The compact that was referred to earlier, although it will not be signed by the city council and the school board, has been initiated between the superintendent and the city manager, which is a wonderful thing. City manager has also advised us that in the coming months, both the city council and the school board will receive further presentations from our risk management professional advisors with Wachovia and some of the other insurance companies. And hopefully, by the time the two elected bodies get the same information from the same professionals, we'll come to the same conclusions. And this may be an area where we can indeed share responsibilities and put these funds together, which will effectively just give us more money to put back into education. So I'm going to go no on this item. I know it will pass, but it's something I feel strongly about. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion passes. Six, one. Which brings us to item 17-400, which is the consideration of a motion to accept and grant funds, certain grant funds, and appropriate the same. Would you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting jail mental health program grant funding in the amount of $939,435 awarded by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and administered by the subrecipient Hampton Roads Regional Jail and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to fund therapy and case management services at the regional jail.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this item, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Sir, second. We have a motion that's been duly seconded, which is to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this item carries. Which brings us to item 17-401, which is the consideration and adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Yes. A resolution to approve the FY 2018 Performance Contract for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services.
Thank you. In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for adoption.
Sir, second. We have a motion to adopt the resolution that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, please vote no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, item 17-402, Portsmouth Commission's Vice Mayor Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no nominations this evening.
Thank you. Which brings us to item 17-403, item submitted by council members. And Councilwoman Simmons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a couple of fun things coming up in the next week or two. This coming Saturday, our very own lightship Portsmouth will celebrate its 101st birthday. It will be open free to the public on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Also, this Saturday, the 16th, is the Fourth Annual Portsmouth Pavilion Craft Beer and Wine Festival. That is a ticketed event from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Portsmouth Pavilion, just outside City Hall. On Monday, September 18th, we have a community meeting. That's a casual city council meeting that's at the Craddock Middle School on Alden Avenue in Craddock at 7:00 p.m. That's Monday, September 18th. There's no agenda. You can come and speak to your council on any items of interest to you. On Thursday, September 21st, next week, we have a ticketed concert at the Portsmouth Pavilion, Kenny Babyface Edmonds with special guest Brandy. And the following Saturday, September 23rd, is the 70th Annual Fish Bowl Parade and Football Game. And the parade this year is going to be completely backwards from the way it's always been, or at least in my memory. It's going to start at the foot of High Street at 10:00 o'clock in the morning and end at Norcombe High School. So it's going to head west instead of east at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 23rd. And the football game that afternoon is at 2:00 at Norcombe High School, and it will be the Norcombe Greyhounds versus the Churchland Truckers. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. This brings us to item 17-404, report on pending items. Madam City Manager, do you have any pending items?
No. No, Mayor, members of council, we do not have any pending items.
Thank you. Which brings us to item 17-405, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is Mr. Carl Burden. And sir, you have five minutes. And our first speaker is Mr. Carl Burden, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, members of city council, to the honorable mayor and those members. Before I start, I'd like to read something. Virginia, Inner Circuit Court of the City of Portsmouth. In reference, open qualification, I'm gonna say, city council members, we, city council members do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all my duties, a comment upon me as a member of the Portsmouth City Council for a seat term. This is also certified. I read that because my concern was having accessibility to my city officials, the elected officials. My incident occurred when I was a public official where I made a request to meet with the city manager, got an appointment, showed up for the appointment, to be told I didn't have an appointment, get back in contact with my secretary. This was in June. Contacted the secretary every day for about two weeks. No one returned my call and never got an appointment. It was some very important matters that needed to be handled. I do not think this is fair to us as citizens who actually vote for our council and that we can't have accessibility to talk with you about matters that are important to our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Patton, would you have one of your assistants?
Yes.
Get with this gentleman. Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Liverman. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, and Portsmouth citizens.
Ma'am, would you speak in the microphone, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Stephanie Liverman. I live at one sixty-seven Mount Vernon Avenue in Portsmouth. I've been closely watching all the controversy revolving around relocating the nation's monuments, and Portsmouth especially, since this is my home. I'm baffled by the attention and money that's being expended to remove and revise history. I watched the public work session from last night and just couldn't stop shaking my head at the thousands and thousands of dollars already wasted on an issue that's been largely instigated by people that don't even live here. How many city salary hours have been spent on an extensive presentation with all the lines and bubbles outlining how much more we will have to spend in study after study on the feasibility of moving the monument? It's ridiculous, a sad joke, really, considering it hasn't even been determined if it's legal. I believe I can save Portsmouth taxpayers thousands, if not a million or more, with one statement, put it to a vote in November. Decide this issue the democratic way and let Portsmouth citizens decide if they want their tax dollars to be spent on what is basically a political issue. Because maybe moving the monument will make some people feel better. But will it make Portsmouth be better off? A few things that are tangible metrics to make the city be better are better schools, being able to live in safe, crime-free neighborhoods, creating more jobs and better jobs to be able to take care of our families, to eliminate the drug abuse that's literally destroying lives and killing our people. These are measurable goals that would actually make Portsmouth be better, and it just makes logical sense to me. But then again, I'm not a politician. But getting back to the monument, a while back, I visited my grandson's elementary school, and there on the bulletin board was a beautiful message. It said, "Seek first to understand, then to be understood." So I took that message to heart and I ran with it. I began studying and praying to really try to understand the perspective of those that want the monument moved. I was very pleasantly enlightened. Portsmouth has an inspirational and, inspirational and rich African-American history. We are one of the largest hubs, we were one of the largest hubs, of the Underground Railroad, fascinating stories of how Portsmouth contributed to the freedom for so many slaves. And there was also a plethora of influential black Americans who came from Portsmouth and live in Portsmouth. I learned of Charles Veal, for instance, a Medal of Honor recipient and true American patriot, who was supposed to be honored here in Portsmouth. I decided to go find this tribute to him. Well, it took me a while, but I found it. There was his name listed on a plaque with many other recipients. Very nice, but just not enough, in my opinion, to reflect Portsmouth's diversity and culture. So let's spend our dollars displaying more history, not trying to hide the parts of it we don't like. I could happily get behind more tributes being built, more art being created, to reflect the immense contributions that black Americans have made to our nation and to our city. So instead of spending thousands and thousands on study after study, why not commission some artists to create these tributes that reflect the culture of our community? This will pull dollars in in tourism versus tossing our dollars away on studies and evaluation and legal fees. Another great suggestion I heard from a gentleman that spoke at last council meeting, I think his name was McClure, he suggested to rein, he, he suggested to reinvent and rededicate our monument in a way that reflects our hopefully enlightened society of today. Don't you think this would put Portsmouth on the map nationwide as a city that came to a real and meaningful display of true compromise that actually unites the people of our city? So lastly, I'd like to say, let's explore these less costly options more, and we must put them to a vote from the taxpaying, for the taxpaying citizens from Portsmouth to give them a direct voice in settling this nationwide tinderbox in our city. Let's stop these external political influences and wasting of our tax dollars and show real unity. It affects us directly. Let us vote on it directly and democratically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Crystal Harrison. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
I want to thank y'all for letting me get up here and speak. My name is Crystal Harrison. My name is Crystal Harrison. I'm from the Virginia Organizing, if y'all could stand up. Virginia Organizing has decided to make the city council and their concerns accessible, meaning, a month ago, I tried to contact the city council. I was redirected to a website. I then filled out the form. I have not heard anything back from anyone at all. I did follow through. I asked to speak to somebody that could address my concerns and speak on my behalf in the West Haven area. I was given phone numbers for everybody except for Council Whitaker. I personally have not got a phone call back from anybody, nor have I received any emails concerning my situation. I'm up here also with Tyrion Green. Tyrion came in to the City Hall Building with meetings. She came in and asked to speak to some of the members. She was directed to business cards by the woman on the front desk. I'm not sure what her name was. And all city council members did have phone numbers except for Councilman Whitaker, but yet she has not had any response from anybody. And this has been going on since about June or July. So we just want to see what we can do as Virginia Organizing and the citizens of the city of Portsmouth to make the city councilable, city councilable more accessible to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Dr. Patton, would you have one of your assistants get the pertinent information?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Steve Carroll, and sir, you've got five minutes.
Steve Carroll, I hope to address two issues tonight, the monument and school funding. I did a little research and I took some rough dimensions of the monument. And if it's solid granite, which I think it is, that monument weighs approximately sixty tons. That's more, that's fifty percent more than a fully legally loaded eighteen-wheel truck. That is approximately, given the base of it, approximately one ton of ground pressure per square foot. Buildings require pilings for ground pressures much less than that. The proposal to send it to Cedar Grove Cemetery is totally asinine. The ground is unsuitable for that kind of weight. The roads are incapable of taking the kind of crane, it will take a seventy-ton crane to haul it over there. I went over and looked at it this afternoon. The monument has numerous cracks in it. It will be damaged beyond repair if it's touched. To spend twenty thousand dollars to study this, the thought process in that is a bucket of sheep dip. That is crazy. It's on the National Historic Register. How dare you touch it? It's a memorial. How dare you touch it? I'll promise you this. Whatever legal action, current or emergent, that will hold the four of you who want to move that monument, I hope and pray, and I will join it, to hold you individually and personally liable, not administratively liable, personally liable, for any damage done to that monument, for any legal, illegal manipulation of it, and any vandalism of that monument that is caused because of lack of due diligence. You can bet on that. I will spend no small expense to join that legal action. This city is on, is somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred million dollars in debt, and you're gonna spend money for that? Look me in the eye, all of you. None of you have the, have the guts to do it, do you? And the lady, ma'am, I applaud you. She's exactly right.
Please address your comments, the council.
I am, sir. I agree with the lady who just spoke. This is instigated by our former mayor, Senator Lucas, her two political sisters who meddle in our schools, and of course, her poster child for honesty and integrity.
Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Stay in bounds.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Derek Harbin, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share a few thoughts about the Confederate monument controversy. I get frustrated when I hear people claiming that the Civil War was about states' rights and not about slavery. It's not true. The Vice President of the Confederacy speaking about the Confederacy's Constitution wrote that "the cornerstone of this new government rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man and that the institution of slavery would never pass away." I get frustrated when I hear people claim that since seventy-four percent of Virginians didn't own slaves, they had no reason to fight for it. Not true. Slavery kept the Southern economy going. All white citizens benefited from it, whether they owned slaves or not. Slavery also gave poor whites status in the community because all the degrading work was accomplished by black slaves who were lower in class than whites were. In the words of the day, "The poorest non-slaveholder may rejoice with the richest slaveholder because they both shared white skin. The worst thing that could happen would be to free those with black skin and elevate them as social equals. Keeping that status quo was worth fighting for." I get frustrated when white people say that our Confederate monument is heritage and shouldn't be moved. None of us were slaves or ever owned a slave, so what's the big deal? I was born and raised in North Carolina. Some of my ancestors were Revolutionary War patriots. Others fought for the Confederacy. The blunt reality is that the Confederate heritage that my ancestors fought to preserve was wrong. My ancestors and those soldiers who were memorialized by the Court Street Monument fought to preserve a way of life that enslaved other human beings based on the color of their skin. And for the next hundred and fifty-plus years, segments of our culture fought and continue to fight to this day against social equality for black Americans. I am a Christian priest serving in this fine city. My faith in Jesus Christ compels me to strive for justice and peace and to respect the dignity of every human being. I believe that the continuing presence of Portsmouth's Confederate monument in the center of a downtown street fails to respect the dignity of our black citizens under the guise of historic preservation and heritage. The monument does belong, and does deserve to be preserved, but it belongs in a place where those who desire to do so can remember and honor the dead. I support our mayor's call for it to be moved to Cedar Grove Cemetery. No matter the legal or financial hurdles, I respectfully ask each of you as our civic leaders to take this step together in unity. Through your unity, black and white together, you can help us heal racial divisions in this city so that we can embrace a prosperous future that values and respects all our citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, the chair, before our next speaker, the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, um, is it Reverend, Reverend Harbin?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I want to thank you for speaking truth to power and also speaking to the issue that Dr. Martin Luther King raised in the letter from the Birmingham Jail when he challenged the silence of the white clergy and not addressing the social injustices of the day. And, and I want to commend you for your stance and what you spoke this evening. You spoke the truth, and you spoke a truth that the clergy particularly should be held accountable for, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Renee Davis Wilkins, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, council members, and constituents here of Portsmouth. I am continuing the issue of accessibility. I'd like to read to you some issues that we have identified as constituents in regards to communicating with each of the council members and trying to communicate with Mayor Rowe. The numbers that we have been given and provided, we received from the front desk, two people called each city council members, five of seven did not answer. Two people called Mayor Rowe and left messages. We have not had an answer or a response. One person communicated and left a message for Paige Cherry. His mailbox is full, and he did not answer, nor did he, did he respond back. Two people... Two people called Elizabeth Simons, no response, and called back. One person called Lisa Lucas Burke, left a message, no response. Dr. Whitaker, not only did he not respond, he does not have a personal number on which to call. Instead, his number goes to the, rolls back to the City Hall. When we obtained an alternative number for him from someone who knows him personally, he did not respond to this number either. The only two people who have responded were Mr. Moody and Mr. Claw. So, thank you very much for being concerned and listening, and setting up a scheduled meeting, and we hope that we will follow up with each of you to have a meeting to discuss the issues as we are constituents of this city. The next time around, we're asking, when we call, leave a message, or we can initially come in contact with each of you, we're asking that it is appropriate that you respond to us as citizens. I've enjoyed living in this city, and I respect each of you. We're asking in return of respect for us as constituents to respond and to hear us. Bilateral communication is essential. Portsmouth has such potential to grow, to move, to develop, but you've got to hear us. We have some concerns, and it's not just affecting the City Hall, it's affecting the entire city. So, at this point, I would just like to say, there's a list of recommendations. Once we meet with each of you, we would like to review our list of information and recommendations, and we're asking for your listening ear to hear what we have to say. We've had other constituents to express their concerns or what's passionate to them. I will not take your time any further, but I just encourage you to hear us. It's bilateral communication. We have something to say, just as well you do. We voted for you, we support you, and we're asking in response for your support for our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, please refrain from showing emotion. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. To all the folks that have had trouble getting hold of me, and just for the record, I don't have a home telephone. I don't have a city cellphone. I have one telephone, with one telephone number, for my personal life, for my business life, and for city council work. The number is 535-0227. It's been the same number for probably 10 years. And if you call me and you leave me a message, I'm going to return the call. I don't recognize anybody's name as either. I've been home sick for a month. I don't have any calls I haven't returned. I was home the whole month of June with a new knee. I'm sorry, I don't have any messages to call you all. So, please call me again, 535-0227, so I can respond. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Good evening, everyone. I would also like to say that I do not receive any messages. I check my emails faithfully every day, and I check my telephone every day. Do not have a message. I do know that my business cards, at one point in time, had my number transposed, and those were corrupted, so I do hope that you have the new business card. But I do return the calls. I have spoken to several members, several citizens. Always return emails diligent with that. So, please try again, because I would love to hear your concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor.
I guess Cincinnati was pleading their case. You know, she said my mailbox is full, you can't even message if the mailbox is full. But I return calls. I talk to half the citizens in this city have my personal cellphone number that they call me on. But if you don't leave me a message, and I don't recognize the number, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not apt to call it back. But if you leave me a message, and you're concerned, I will return your call. That's been my practice. But I have three cellphones, one personal, one that belongs to the city, and one belongs to my place of employment, that I answer all three of them. So, it's not a lot, I don't have all day to do it, but if you leave me a message, I will return your call. But if you don't, I'm answering the one that I know who I'm calling, what they're calling for. So, please leave a message, and I will return your call.
Lastly, anybody that would like to speak, meet with me, I'll meet you, and I ask you to talk with Deborah White. She's very good at setting up meetings on a daily basis, and I'll give you my home telephone number, which is 483-3136. It's in the telephone directory and online. Thank you. The next speaker is Paul Tuttle, and sir, you've got five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This is my first time standing in front of you guys, and it's my second time ever being in a city council meeting. The last time, I was a teenager and witnessing how things were done here. I actually, I sent you an email, Mr. Mayor. My father has had very, had really good contact with you when you were running for mayor, and I sent you an email. I didn't get a response. I just wanted to throw that in there. And that email, I've kind of changed it a little bit, but I'm going to read you basically what the email was about to you guys. This is in reference to the Confederate statue. First of all, my name is Paul Tuttle. I'm a 41-year-old lifelong citizen of Portsmouth. My wife and I currently own a home in the Somersdale area, right next door to where I grew up, where we raised two wonderful boys, one who has just joined the Air Force, the other currently attending Wilson High School. I'm here today because I believe I have a perfect solution for the controversial topic and some of the division in our city. Moving the Confederate monument will not bring us together, but will instead divide us further. Most citizens in the city do not approve of the move to the cemetery, and I see this move as an act of offense to those who are, those of us who are family of the Confederate dead, including me, and yes, I will correct someone who spoke earlier, it is heritage. Every time I hear the city removing a statue or a memorial, it breaks my heart, it hurts. I don't stand for slavery. I don't stand for hate. I don't stand for anything that divides this country. I, too, have a firm foundation in my faith in Jesus Christ, who stood for unity, who stood for human beings being treated equally. That statue, I know to some, is a reminder of a time in our history that was painful and that bad things were happening. One of the speakers said tonight that it wasn't about slavery, that it was, you know, that some people say it's not about slavery. Yes, it was partly about slavery, but mostly it was about states' rights, the original Constitution, the original writing of the Constitution, states' rights. Slavery was coming to an end regardless of who was going to win that Civil War. Every time, but here's my solution. Earlier, Stephanie stood up here, I've never met Stephanie before in my life. What she said is basically what I'm going to share. First of all, let us name the intersection where the current memorial stands, Unity Square. Second, let us erect a new memorial across the street or on the same street of the Confederate Memorial, one that will bring memory to it African-American local history. As an act of equality, the memorial will have the same height, the same square footage. The idea has come to mind, to me personally, is a memorial for the Maroons. I'm not sure if any of you know who the Maroons are, but recently, the Maroons were a large group of runaway slaves who created the city in the middle of the dismal swamp that was recently discovered by an archaeologist. What a story to tell. Did any of you know about the Maroons? What great sacrifices and fear it must have been for the men and women and children who lived there and built a community. We already have plenty of statues of the great Martin Luther King Jr., but let us bring light to a story of other true black American heroes, who have done amazing things in the Civil War and gone unspoken of. There are those of, there was also those of color who fought in the Civil War, and on both sides, and the ones who fought for the Confederacy were free. How do we pay for it? Here you go. Let us start a unity fund where donations can be made and taxpayer money not used. I would even help set that up. I would raise, we could raise millions, and I'm running out of time, and I really have more to say, but let us lead the way to unity. Unity. Taking that statue down, Mr. Whitaker, is going to cause more division. It's going to cause more division, it's going to make me feel like I've been rejected, my history's been rejected, and that my forefathers rejected. I am part of, I am a son of the Confederacy. My great-grandfather was a soldier in the Confederacy. Thank God, he didn't die during the war, he came home alive. But he's buried as a veteran, and he was recognized as a veteran, as an American veteran in the '60s. But we can argue, we can argue all day long about slavery and about Civil War, blah, blah, blah. Everybody's going to have their opinions, okay, and it is a hot topic. But if we can bring national attention to the city, we'll bring, it'll bring more people to this area, and Portsmouth will be seen as a unity, and we'll lead the way as a nation and stop the hate and division that is happening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Matthews, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Dan Matthews. I'm a homeowner here in Old Town. I live about three blocks from the Confederate monument, and my middle name is Lee. My mother gave me that name after the Civil War general. My degree is in history from American University in DC, with a focus on Civil War history. And I am proud to say that I support the actual descendants of Robert E. Lee and those of Jefferson Davis, and wanting all the monuments moved to cemeteries or museums where they can be placed in context. I say this as a concerned resident of Old Town, long before the tragedy that struck in Charlottesville. I can tell you that white supremacists have come to congregate around the Confederate Memorial here and have drinks at Beer Garden afterward. I can tell you that on the Halloween walks here in Old Town, that people point to the Confederate monument and talk about the degradation suffered by Confederate Virginians, overlooking the degradation suffered by the slaves. This Confederate Memorial is a flashpoint for bigotry and for hatred, and as somebody who travels a lot, I can tell you, when you're in Germany, you do not see Nazi war memorials. For those whose families fought in Nazi Germany, you can pay your respects in a cemetery, where you can do so in a way that does not glorify the government, in this case, the illegal government that that stands for. So, I'm very proud that the mayor has introduced this measure, and I support you in moving it, as do many of us here in Old Town. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Ursula Murphy, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of City Council. Ms. Simmons, I hope you feel better soon. I've come to you about a couple of issues I'd like to have an update on. The first is the Craddock site, the old Craddock High School site. Saturday before last, I was out there, and it's sad. It is probably the worst I have seen it. I'd really like to know what is going to be done about getting that grass out there cut, because the grass is not grass anymore. It's weeds, and they're almost waist-deep in some areas. So, if you could find out and let us know. The second item, can you give us an update on what's going on at the sportsplex? I know that there's been roofing material, and at least four HVAC units have been sitting on the ground over there for quite some time. Anyone that knows anything about materials, you have warranties, and those warranties start the day you buy it, so you need to, you know, see what's going on and get those materials up on the roofs where they belong. The second item, the third item, rather, that I'd like to ask about is regarding some peeling paint. I recently got an issue resolved with my company regarding a small section, I'm talking about a six-inch section square of peeling paint on the front of one of the buildings that I manage. When I went to get approval to replace the canvas awning that was in, that was making it a little difficult for me to get to that section, it's on the second floor, I was told by the gentleman in the assistant building official, that he did not know where 1021 High Street is. Anyone that knows and lives in the city knows where 1021 High Street is, it's the old Mary Jane Bakery. Can you please get somebody to put some paint on that building? It's terrible. It looks awful, and it hasn't, nothing has been done to that building in many, many The next item that I'm going to ask for some information on came to me by way of another concerned citizen. And when I went to investigate, I was quite shocked and surprised that this could have happened, and I listened to some of our, I'm not going to say I've listened to all of the council meetings since this body took office in January, so I'm hoping that if there is some, a vote on this item, that you can come back and tell the citizens about it. But allegedly, our sheriff has erected an indoor shooting range out at the sheriff's complex. He's taken two 40-foot containers, put them end to end, has put electricity in there, and heating and air conditioning in there, a roof, and is trying to make an indoor shooting range, allegedly. I don't know that to be true. I haven't been able to find out the facts on it. But I would have, I would have to say that if it has been approved, it would have to be approved by this body, because there would have to be, I would think, a public hearing on it. It's right there at South Side. It's a freestanding structure. Are there building permits, or was this done without any permits? I hope you can find that out. My last item is an ongoing debate regarding the storm drains in this city, and who is responsible for keeping them clean. I recently, as I came before you last year, and talked about the storm drain next to the Pet Boys on Airline Boulevard and Victory Boulevard. It's been told that that storm drain is the responsibility of the property owners. I can tell you, no, it's not, because the corporation that I work for is one of the property owners. That storm drain belongs to the city, and the city needs to maintain it. It is what is causing the flooding in that area. So, if you can find out those five items and come back to the citizens and let us know, I know for one, I would be greatly appreciated on it, and thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is, the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, if there's no objection from council, there were some major issues that were just brought to our attention. If there's no objection from council, can we get an update on these issues from our city manager at our next public work session?
Any objection? I assume that the manager was going to do that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, when any council person, council gives me direction, or if there's any items that come before us here, we provide a report back at our next meeting.
Right. Okay. We'll have it. Thank you. The next speaker is Jenna Bernstein, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jenna Bernstein, 701 South Howard. I'm actually Jewish. Let me start with my Lord's Prayer. Shema Yisrael Adonai Eloheinu Adonai Achad. I just had a little bit of a panic attack, because I was evacuating from Hurricane Irma from my hometown of Tampa. I'm a little disheartened. I think God has me on this path, and it's amazing, because I was in your city only for 12 hours today, but I think it's ironic that there's, I've heard of diverse comments. First of all, this photo right here, it represents the American veterans. They look like concentration camp victims, don't they? No, but they're not. They're Confederate American veterans from Point Lookout. See, the reason why this affects me so bad is I lived in Lower Manhattan and went to college, and I was two blocks away from the Trade Center, 93. I don't know if you, I mean, after the coverage yesterday for September 11th, I'm, people definitely won't remember 93 and that little basement bombing, but I'm well aware of it, because I was close by to it, and I suffer panic disorder. Not only went back to help friends and family, basically yesterday, years ago, but I'm disgusted to be American right now. I'm disgusted. I'm disgusted that when I come to city places to defend 12,000 Jews, yeah, 12,000 Jews that fought for the Confederacy, and no offense, everybody, my people as a Jew know all about slavery. Moses parted the Red Sea when the Egyptians, you know, the whole story, you know? Ten Commandments? Mount Sinai? Every person, every person has lineage to somebody involved with slavery. Modern day, happening right now, Africa, human trafficking. I'm disgusted to be an American, because I hear all this crap about Nazi Germany or modern-day Germany, not, everything's illegal in Germany. No, they just had a huge march for Rudolph Hess, huge rally. 10,000 neo-Nazis came out for it. And no, the Nazi flag is not completely banned there. They don't, not, they had, there's monuments many places in Germany for people that served for the Dalai, because they don't erase their history. Oh, it's amazing that you go to Auschwitz, where I've been, where eight million of my people were murdered, right? They don't knock those down, do they? But I'm going to tell you something, they are American veterans. Those monuments deserve to stand where they sit. And let's talk about Dallas, Texas. Let's talk about that I drove to Dallas, Texas to address them, or San Antonio. Talked to Mayor Sylvester, and I said to the Houston City Council, I said, you know, I was at a rally. I was at a rally, and I had my bullhorn, and I wasn't wearing this, but I make this a permanent fixture now. But I don't, are you, does anybody even know what this represents? Anybody? This is what the Jews were made to wear in Germany, to identify us, the subhuman Jews. But I'm wearing it modern day, because apparently people can't remember history from 75 years ago, 50 years ago. Because I know when Dr. King marched this earth, which I did the march on Selma, when Obama flew in and did his little speech on his helicopter and left, I did the full march, because I respect all of history. And St. Augustine, where they pulled poor acid, where black and white civil activists, civil rights activists in the early 60s worked, I was there for the anniversary to talk about it and have a dialogue. That's why I'm here, to try to educate you and have a dialogue. So, you know, first of all, you have a Virginia law. You can't move your memorial. Alice Silverstein tried to do that in Alexandria, denied by your State House. Your governor, you're 1.5 billion dollars in the rear for the Commonwealth of Virginia? Yeah, keep moving monuments, but let's go back to Dallas. How people are getting pulled out of vehicles that are dead from flooding, and the City Council of Dallas said, you know what? Let's take a memorial that's in a cemetery that they built as civic center and a city council hall around that's been there since the 1840s. Now they're removing it from a cemetery for $4 million and putting it out of public view. Google it. The same day, Congress gave them $8 billion to rebuild their state. Are you kidding me? As a taxpayer? Now I'm paying, by the way, my governor, it's 15 billion actually emergency funding for all this Irma, all this destruction of our country, but natural disaster. Guess what? 15 billion that covers us to the first week of October. Keep laughing. Where's the money coming from? Where's the money going to come from? Where's FEMA getting all the trailers for everybody? I know my city was spared by the grace of God, but Jacksonville wasn't spared. The Keys weren't spared. Who's paying for it? And Dallas had the audacity to vote out for $4 million when I have to pay now the tax-paying money for, I'm just disgusted. But I just had a panic attack. I beg you to do the right thing. It's 2017. If you can't make it in this country, black, white, Irish, blue, groom, it's on you. It's on you. But I was in your city at your monument today called a Nazi in your city? I was only here for 12 hours? You're right. Call me to order. I hope you listen to what I said, and peace be with you and God be with you.
Ma'am, your time is up. Please sit down.
Excuse me?
I said, please sit down.
Then you said, sit down. You didn't say, please.
Last speaker is Charlene Sullins, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe and the City Council. I'm not here to address the meeting of the Harper Valley PTA, but the Portsmouth City Council and its mayor, and I'd like to talk about the Confederate monument. Mayor Rowe, when you ran for mayor, you campaigned you wouldn't bother the Confederate monument. Kenny Wright and Ferguson divided the city over it. You are worse than they are, because you lied. You said it had hurt too many people too long. That is not, that is not so. Most Virginians want them up. I live in a primarily black neighborhood, and the monument doesn't bother them. I saw a black woman take a picture of the monument. She said they honor their Confederate dead. A few who don't know their history want it down. It is a tourist attraction. The average Confederate soldier wasn't fighting for slavery, and the North wasn't fighting to free them. Their leaders got them into it, just like leaders send their boys off to war today. My great-grandpa Sullins fought for the Confederacy, and four of his brothers were killed. Shortly after he got home, it is believed he was killed by Republican Guard. And to take this monument down, it's in honor of the Confederate dead. My family owned those slaves. Most of the soldiers were drafted. 6% of the South owned slaves, and I think they were the plantation owners. There is a state law prohibiting you from bothering this monument, so my advice is to leave it alone.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no further speakers and no further business. This meeting is adjourned.